Steve, can you welcome us?
Yes, indeed. I'm Steve Perkins. I'm Chair of Progressive Democrats of La Porte County. I want to welcome everyone to this first of two forums. Tonight's forum will focus on the city council race. And then tomorrow night at six o'clock, there will be a second forum focused on the mayoral race. It's a chance for you to get to know the candidates who are running in the Democratic primary and to make your choice. Everybody probably knows it, but let me just say that each person, each Democrat in Michigan City gets to vote for a Democratic candidate for their own ward. And then three candidates out of the four who are running citywide. So you get to vote for up to four candidates. So keep your ears open. There are a number of people going to hear tonight that you have a chance to vote for. And I'm going to hand it over to Deb Chubb, who's our illustrious moderator. It's all yours, Deb.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So again, welcome. Thanks, Steve, for that introduction. And we'd like to have a few words from our Democratic Party Chair for La Porte County. So Angie Hensman, so go ahead, dear.
Hi, I'm Angie Hensman, the Democratic Party Chair for La Porte County. And I'm really proud of every one of the candidates on this call and those who are unable to join us today as well. We have some fantastic, phenomenal leaders in our community. And this is just a handful of them, and it's been a pleasure to get to know them and their passion. And I am confident that you're going to get to know them. And you also are going to just, you know, love them and what they bring to the table. They all have great experience and life perspectives, unique perspectives that we need. And I'm excited to see what these folks can bring to our city council. So without any other words, I would say one thing, if you don't know what ward you belong to, and many people are in that situation, there's been some ward changes. Please go to indianavoters.com and it will lead you directly to how you can put in your information and find out which one of these phenomenal leaders are going to be at your ward leaders. And then do remember the at-large means that they will represent the whole city. And as Steve said, you get to choose three out of the four who are running. So that's just a little bit of an introduction, and I'm excited to see what they have to share with us tonight.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much, Angie. So just to tell everyone about the process, we are going to let all of the candidates have up to three minutes to do an introductory statement. We have two candidates who are unopposed in the primary, and we're going to let them go first. And then they will not be involved in the questions that will follow because they're unopposed. So I think we'll hear from the fifth ward representative or candidate first. And that is Tracy Tillman, who is an incumbent who's running for reelection. And so Tracy, go ahead.
Thank you, Deborah. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank the Progressive Democrat for allowing me to be on this forum this evening. And good evening to everyone that is. Again, I am Tracy Tillman, and I am currently the fifth ward councilperson, councilwoman in the fifth ward, and I am unopposed for the primaries. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of information to reintroduce myself. I am a mother of two young men, and I am born and raised here in Michigan, from Michigan City, Indiana. I currently work with the La Porte County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for the Child Support Division, where I am the executive liaison, and I have been with the county government for 30-plus years. And within that, I deal with working alongside state and county administration. I assist with annual state and federal audits, monthly budgets. I'm also appointed Special Deputy Sheriff of La Porte County. I've been appointed Special Deputy since 1995. And what I would like to foresee is moving forward with bringing back the fifth ward inside of Michigan City to be vibrant throughout the communities along with our neighboring wards throughout the city. So as I say on my social media and my contacts, I put on there, "Change for the People by the People." There has been some new development within the east side of Michigan, on the east side of Michigan City. And I am looking forward for future development in the near future, future development for the east side, for the residents. And if there are any questions or concerns, or you just want to reach out, please feel free to contact me at tracytforfifthward@gmail.com. You can also reach me by contacting me via phone, 219-229-5206, and also at tracyt@emichigancity.com. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Tracy. Terrific. Okay, now we're going to move on to Nancy Moldenhauer. So Nancy, can you unmute? And we would love to hear from you for your introductory statement.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Deb, Steve, and Dahlia for organizing and for facilitating this evening. I am Nancy Moldenhauer. I'm running for Michigan City Council for Ward Six. Jean Simmons is actually retiring, so this opportunity came up. I believe that every Michigan City resident deserves clean air, clean water, clean land, and clean energy. I was born, raised, and educated in Michigan City. I have actually lived outside of Michigan City for close to two decades. So I possess a broad view of what's possible for our community by looking from the outside to the inside. I ran for mayor in 2011 as an independent candidate. Then I've been serving Michigan City ever since then. I was seven years on the Michigan City Human Rights Commission, the last to as chair. I currently serve on the Michigan City Sustainability Commission, and I've been doing that since 2019, and currently I am the chair. My accomplishments are as follows. I updated the language in 23 ordinances to protect rights of minorities and veterans. I secured two free electric vehicle chargers for a public parking lot. I acquired Soul Smart Silver Designation from the United States Department of Energy, meaning that Michigan City is solar-ready and friendly. And I sourced job training courses with the NAACP of La Porte County. And the Soul Power Program actually certifies individuals to become solar panel installers. I am committed to claiming the hundreds of thousands of dollars from the state and federal governments that at this point are left on the table. This could increase greatly the impact of our riverboat funds and our operating budget. I support job training opportunities and economic growth for green and technological jobs to keep our youth here. We need these good-paying jobs so people stop leaving Michigan City. Also, I am a stand for the health, well-being, and quality of life for all residents. Every Michigan City resident deserves clean air, clean water, clean land, and clean energy. My thoughtful and transparent leadership style, which is inclusive, strategic, and visionary, will support work opportunities and economic development through partnerships, cooperation, and collaboration. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your vote in the fall general election. And you can reach me at nancyforvision@gmail.com or at post office box 357, Michigan City, 46361. My phone number is 219-210-7513. Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, Nancy. And then just again to let everyone know, Nancy Moldenhauer and Tracy Tillman in the fifth ward and the sixth ward, not respectively, backwards, Nancy Moldenhauer in the sixth ward and Tracy Tillman in the fifth ward are both unopposed in this primary. So thank you, both of you, for coming and introducing yourselves and telling us about yourselves and your platform. Just terrific. And so now we're going to move to the wards that are contested. And we're just going to go in order of the wards. So we're going to start with the first ward. And from the first ward, we have Greg Coulter. The other candidate is Rodney McCormick Jr., who has not joined us tonight. So I'm going to have Greg come on. And so Greg, go ahead and, you know, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your platform.
Hi, so I'm Greg Coulter. I'm running for the first ward. So yeah, just a little bit about me and why I'm running. But first, I want to thank the Progressive Democrats for having us on tonight. I think it's really important that people are able to contact their representatives or the people running to represent them and have a clear, direct line of communication when they want that. So thank you for having us. So a little bit about me and why I'm running for the first ward. I have been a seventh-generation Hoosier. My family moved here in the 1830s. And we've been living in Westville since then. So I grew up in Westville. I moved around a bit, and then when I moved back five years ago for some family health problems, I had some options about where I could live, and I decided I wanted to live in the best part of Indiana, and that's the first ward of Michigan City. So some of the things that make it one of the coolest parts to live is we're so close to the national park. We've got the double tracking going on, and of course, we're right up on the lake. And all of these are things that are attracting more residents to Michigan City and especially the downtown area in the next few years. So I think we need to be smart about that, and that's one of my top priorities as a city councilman, is just being cognizant and ready and intentional about how we're going to do that growth. Because it's happening whether we want it to or not. Other things that are important to me is just safe communities and affordable housing. And one thing that I was talking to with constituents today, because me and my team were knocking on doors in Elston Grove, Eastport, we were in Liberty Trail area, we got Sheridan Beach and Lake Hills. So really covering the first ward today. We missed a couple of the little candidates, but we'll swing back and get those soon. So one of the issues that we keep hearing about is walkability. So not only when we talk about safe communities, are we talking about crime, but we're talking about being able to walk on sidewalks for grandmas to push strollers on sidewalks and be able to safely move about their neighborhoods. So that's one thing that is really important to me, especially after talking to so many constituents today. It's just that they'd like safe sidewalks. So people can reach me. My website is cultureforcitycouncil.com. And then my phone number is 219-224-6260. And then my email is contact@cultureforcitycouncil.com. Thank you.
All right. Okay. And so, and as long as Rodney McCormick Jr. has not appeared in the last, you know, 10 seconds, I don't see him on here, so we're going to move to the second ward. And we're going to start with Daisy Lee. So Daisy, running for second ward, go ahead and, you know, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your platform.
Sure. Thanks, Deb. Good evening. I'm Daisy Lee, and I'm running for city council in the second ward. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank you to the Progressive Democrats of La Porte County for hosting. I'm an educator, and I have been coaching eighth-grade volleyball and teaching seventh and eighth-grade environmental science in STEM here in Michigan City for nine years. I'm a community organizer with experience locally with different nonprofits and serving on the Michigan City Sustainability Commission. I've experienced internationally by helping develop a rural community in Panama while serving in the United States Peace Corps. I grew up in the surrounding areas, but I happily chose Michigan City as my home for the past six and a half years. While serving in the United States Peace Corps, I wrote a grant for $2,000 to build eco stoves for 23 families in my community, which reduced the amount of firewood needed by 50% and eliminated smoke production, in turn, reducing respiratory diseases. We created a fish farm for community members to address the lack of protein in their diet. In the city capital, Panama City, I started a chapter of a global peace organization, CISB. I planned and implemented three countrywide youth camps, and I taught a youth leadership program in various schools around the country. Locally, I helped my students raise their voices to implement a project with the Michigan City Parks Department to raise awareness of the importance of recycling. They created videos to encourage the Parks Department to put in recycling bids in each of our local parks, and they were successful. The Parks Department listened. Recycling bids were put into the parks in May of 2021. In 2019, my students and I won ninth place in the nation with the PepsiCo Recycle Rally, giving our school $10,000. And in 2020, we won sixth place in the nation, giving our school $25,000. I started a care closet at both Barker and Krieger Middle Schools, providing clothing, shoes, and personal hygiene products to those students who need it. This school year alone, at Barker Middle School, we have given out over 615 items to students. The concerns our youth have are the same concerns that adults in the community are concerned with. In my crew or homeroom, we are currently working on a community projects that my students chose themselves. They chose the topic of gun violence in Michigan City. They proposed to partner with the Sandy Hook Promises Say Something Program, which teaches middle school and high school students to recognize the warning signs of someone at risk of hurting themselves or others, and how to say something to a trusted adult to get help. I love Michigan City. I love the people here. I love our diversity. I love our beautiful Lake Michigan. I love our national park. I love how passionate our people are, and I love our students. Naturally, when you love something, you want to help make it the best it can possibly be, and that's why I'm running for city council. I want to help bring positive change to Michigan City. I believe in a positive line of communication between Michigan City residents and the office holders that represent them. I believe in a city council that works together with our police, firefighters, Parks Department, schools, and other city service providers to collaborate on community issues. I'm a visionary, action-oriented, I'm a problem solver, a collaborator, an educator, and a lifelong learner. I bring people together for a common cause, in this case, to make our city a better place. I encourage all second ward residents to reach out to me via email at daisyleeforindiana@gmail.com, or you can find me on Facebook at Daisy Lee for City Council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Daisy. All right. Paul Prispolinski, who's also running in the second ward, was with us, but somehow he is missing now. So I don't see him on here. Hopefully, he will come back, and we'll come back to him if he can get back into our Zoom call. In the meantime, we'll move on to the third ward. And let's see, from, oh, third ward, I don't think we have anyone here, which is unfortunate. Joe Nelson and Agnes Muir are both candidates running as Democrats in the third ward, but they're not here. So we'll move on to the fourth ward. And in the fourth ward, we have Katrina Davis and Sean Fitzpatrick running. And so I don't believe that Sean Fitzpatrick has joined us. I don't, I haven't seen him. And so we're going to go right to Katrina. So Katrina, so hello. And so Katrina, if you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and your platform, that would be delightful.
Good evening, and thank you Progressive Democrats for having us. My name is Katrina Davis, and I'm excited to announce my candidacy for Michigan City Council Ward Four. I'm looking forward to working with the residents and the common council of Michigan City in efforts to continuously make Michigan City a great place to live in. For those of you who don't know me, I live in Michigan, I have lived in Michigan City, La Porte County, for 12 years, eight years in Ward Four. I have a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Ferris State University and have a Master's in Public Administration with Studies in Criminal Justice from Indiana Wesleyan University. I have worked as an adult and juvenile incarceration correction officer and a case manager, and I have been a volunteer advocate for youth and substitute teacher. I enjoy attending church, volunteering with my sorority, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, the American Red Cross, and the NAACP. I intend to bring the Michigan City residents into conversation when it comes down to changes that are going on in our community as far as economic changes within the law, with law enforcement. I would like to bring it back, community policing, introduce that for safer neighborhoods, attainable daycare for all. We all know that daycare is important to working families. If mom and dad are able to work, that makes Michigan City more productive, and it brings more revenue into our city. And that's why I'm running for City Councilwoman Ward Four.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So now we are going to move to our at-large candidates, and we're just going to go alphabetically. So Bryant Dabney will go first. Bryant, who's only hanging on, now I lost you a second there. There you go. Hang on. There we go. Okay. So Bryant, tell us a little bit about yourself and your platform. Oh, you have to unmute, right?
There it is. I saw that. So that started to talk. I thought it was muted. My name is Bryant Dabney. I'm born and raised here in Michigan City, from Eastport Elementary to Krieger Junior High to Elston High School, and then off to the University of Notre Dame, where I graduated with a business finance degree in 1991. Later on, I went back and picked up a master's and MBA with a concentration in finance as well, when I was in 2012. I came back home to be around family, because I was a diabetic back then, and I wanted to be around family. If something were to happen to me, being diabetic, and unfortunately, I did suffer kidney failure. And in 2006, I actually had a life-saving kidney and pancreas transplant. That was in November of 2006. I did have a chance to leave Michigan City. In the meantime, though, back in 2002, for a job in New York. But I passed on that job because I felt like I needed to stay here. I had a nephew who was coming up. A rough family situation, and I really needed to help raise him. So I passed on the job in New York back in 2002 to stay here and help my nephew. Turns out to be a great choice. I got into city politics as I was appointed as the first-ever African-American male to the Parks and Recreation Board of Directors. I served on that board with some really great people for many years. And that is where I learned how the city worked, the ins and outs of how the city worked. The Park Department is a very big department, and you learn a lot on that. I decided I wanted to run for city council way back in 2011. I lost that first attempt. I needed to come in the top four, top three, and I came in fourth that year. But I came back four years later to run for a council spot for the first ward, and I won that election in 2015. I'm now in my second term as first ward councilman, and now I'm running as an at-large councilman in this upcoming election. I'm not abandoning the first ward at all. In my mind, I feel like I'm expanding my neighborhood to include the whole city. I look forward to continuing to serve the people of Michigan City and being, you know, one of nine people, one of nine people in this whole city who hold a responsibility of making laws and making sure that this city is financially stable moving forward. The top priorities that I see right now happening, and you know, after eight years on the council now, safety, obviously, public safety is key. Without public safety, no one wants to move into your city. As a matter of fact, people want to move out of your city if you have, you know, the public safety is not where people feel like it needs to be. Number two is housing opportunities. We're having trouble meeting that housing demand. Our housing stock is going down. I think there are a couple of ways to fix that. Obviously, more development that we do have coming to Michigan City. They're going to be talking about that coming up here real soon. But also, I believe that, you know, we're having problems, and I see it in the first ward with Airbnb and that Verbo. Rentals are taking up a lot of houses that people could rent here in Michigan City. So it's lowering our housing stock. This is becoming a problem, you know, the rent is increasing, and it's just hurting the everyday person here in Michigan City. So hopefully, we'll get a chance to fix that. And one thing that not a lot of people mention that I think is really important for our city is annexation. I really believe that we need to increase our footprint as a city, as well as increase our population. And once we annex these properties and buildings and these businesses that come into our city, that increases our revenue. This city is starving for revenue. A lot of people, you know, there's simple ways to cut spending, cut spending. We've been doing that for years. Now that we have to, we have to increase the revenues that are coming into Michigan City.
Okay, Bryant, I'm sorry, you're out of time. But, but, but all great information. I'm sure you'll get another chance to talk more about that.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. And so next, we're going to move to Dr. Vidya Cora. And Dr. Cora, so please, of course, tell us a little bit about yourself and your platform.
Good evening. I want to thank the Progressive Democrats for organizing this event, and thank you, Deb, for moderating it. I know you have done this many, many times. You always do a great job. Thanks for doing it. Anyway, I'm Vidya Cora. I'm running for city council at large. I have been involved in public life for close to two decades in various capacities. And the reason I decided to do this was when I came to Michigan City over 35 years ago, I felt that this was a wonderful community, and I still believe it's a great community. I also felt that it had great potential, and I still believe it has great potential, which we have not realized. And it is my hope that if I get elected, I would like to serve with this wonderful group of individuals and have a common vision, common purpose, to take our, move our city forwards. One of my priorities is, you know, as a long-term resident here, I have seen the challenges of Michigan City, the opportunities of Michigan City. And I have served in various capacities. I served on the school board for a term because I value education. And I have, you know, I see every day how important education is in enhancing our life. And if I do get elected to the city council, I want to make sure that I will bring to the plate what I have learned about building, you know, consensus, collaboration, cooperation, finding common cause, common purpose, a vision and a goal, and then work together with our colleagues in a collaborative fashion to accomplish those goals. Balanced economic growth is critically important for us, wherein we attract new businesses, but we also support existing businesses. And for that to happen, we have to create a business-friendly environment that incentivizes companies to invest in our community while making sure that our city is affordable, remains affordable and accessible to all. One area where we can spur economic growth and promote economic growth is to is to properly implement double tracking, because this is a great opportunity for us in Michigan City. This will not only provide good transportation for our residents, but will also encourage more investment, more commerce, more business to come into our community, which will, which will enhance the life of all of us who live in this community. And I will work hard to work with local leaders, regional leaders, elected officials to make sure that we realize the full potential of double tracking. Education, as I mentioned, is a key priority of mine, and I'll make, I want to work with our educational institution, the school board, to make sure that they have the financial resources and the funding to provide high-quality education for our kids in Michigan City. And attracting younger people is very important for any community, and this has been a key priority of mine. For that to happen, we must create an environment that is vibrant, that is welcoming. That means we have to invest in public spaces. We have to promote arts and culture. We have to support initiatives that create jobs and opportunities for young people. And as a councilman, I will work hard. Everybody knows my track record, and I'll work hard to make sure Michigan City becomes a place where people of all ages and all backgrounds will be proud to call home.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cora. You have, out of time too. But again, you'll have more time to talk more about those issues, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, Don, thank you for your patience. You are our last at-large candidate, so if you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and your platform. Oh, and you're muted for some, so you have to unmute. Dahlia might be able to help you. You need a, you need a tech support there. There you go. Great, great, great.
Yeah. And Deb, yeah, I do have a lot of patients because I was number four out of seven children growing up. So I was right in the middle, taking it all and passing it down the line. But yeah, anyway, welcome all the other candidates for their offices. Thank you for this forum tonight. It's always good to be able to talk to the public on our views and what we stand for and why we want to be elected. And myself, yeah, Don Prispolinski, running for city councilman at large. I'm actually running for my fourth term on the, on the city council. And I've actually grown up, and where I get my, I guess, ambition and energy to do this kind of work is I grew up in a family of public service. My father was on the city council for many years. My brother Paul, he's on the city council, and that's the way that we were raised in our mindset, what we can do to make our city better every day. When you get out of bed, what am I going to do to make things better? Moving on from that, I have also, I graduated from Manchester College with a degree in Business Administration and Economics. Also worked at US Steel in Gary, Indiana, for 36 years as a manager in the environmental world, in the transportation world, and in the manufacturing world, centering around productivity, safety, and environmental compliance. Now, while serving on the council so far, I have had leadership positions. I've been the president of the city council. positions. I've been the president of the city council. I've served as vice president. I presently serve as vice president. I've been the chairman of the finance committee. I've been the fi- our chairman of the, uh, labor relations committee. Uh, we just got done with that and arts committee and along with, uh, uh, Nancy Molnauer on the, uh, human rights commission. I've been the liaison, uh, to that commission also. And, uh, just what, what my objectives are and what I think we need to do moving forward is I have three objectives. Uh, number one, and I'm sure everybody will agree with it, is public safety. Uh, and, and what's going on right now with gun violence in Michigan City, and I'm going to allude to more of that uh, as the program goes on. Quality of life issues and what I mean by that, uh, investigate new housing, uh, opportunities. Uh, how we can increase income opportunities for folks. And one thing that I am working on in quality of life also deals with the Parks Department is in Federals Alley and myself and the Parks Department has been working on this for the last year and a half is what's going to be called the, uh, Federals Alley All-Inclusive, uh, Park Experience, which is going to be uh, a three-point-five-million-dollar development in Federals Alley. And we're hoping to get that going maybe in the fall of twenty-twenty-three or spring of twenty-twenty-four. Talk about that more later.
You're out of time. Sorry, sorry, Don. Um, but, uh, you are out of time. But, um, we'll come back and you'll have more opportunity to talk about all of those issues. Okay. Great. So, um, so everyone has had an opportunity then to, um, do and, um, uh, to do an introduction and talk about their platform. And so now we're going to go back to the first ward. And, um, and I'm going to find, um, Greg here. There we go. And, and I think, um, Greg is the only person we have here from the first ward. Um, but if, if I'm wrong, somebody, you know, yell and let me know. Um, so Greg, I want you to, um, tell us what your priorities are for the first ward. But I would also, I'm, so I'm kind of combining two questions because I think this might go a little smoother. So I want you to tell us what your priorities are for the first ward, but I want you to also talk about the NIPSO, NIPSCO, um, closure. Um, we know that, um, the generating plant here in Michigan City is scheduled to, uh, shut down, uh, in twenty-twenty-eight. And possibly, um, it may happen ahead of that, uh, schedule. And so, um, so I'd like you to talk about, you know, your priorities in the first ward. But I also want you to address that other question about the NIPSCO clo- closure. And then the question really about that is, um, tell us what you, you know, you know, how you envision the transition and what you would like to see happen to that land once that uh, coal burning, generating, electricity generating plant is gone.
So I'll do that in the opposite order just really quickly. Um, so with NIPSCO closing, one of the priorities that I would have is making sure that they clean up the coal ash before they leave. Um, and then just also considering that they're not going to be completely gone. I know that they're still going to have offices there to help with the, um, I haven't had it completely described to me all the way, but, um, they're, they're not leaving their entire footprint. The, there's still going to be quite a bit of it that's still there. But they need to make sure that the coal ash is gone before they go. Um, the other thing that I really want to talk about is, uh, just like you said, my priorities for the first ward. And the three that I've got are, um, safer communities, affordable housing and smart growth. And I really want to focus on smart growth right now. So in my background as a librarian and working at the historical society and nonprofits, I've gotten to understand how Michigan City has worked for, um, the last hundred and so years and the excitement that's been going on here. And one thing I'd like to make sure of is that in the next five years, as we see five thousand new people join us in Michigan City, is making sure that Michigan City residents are able to serve them and do business with them. So finding ways to make sure that current residents are able to ride the wave of prosperity and are, are well situated to, um, come out on top of that, that growth, not just having more Starbucks move in and other chain restaurants or something. But I'm making sure that Michigan City residents have the tools they need to start businesses. And the way that we can do that is by creating a business incubator. So one of my top priorities is working with my other councilmen. Um, as Brian Dabney is saying, is like to be sure that there are eight other people up there with you. There's a mayor. There's everybody else running the government to finding consensus and working with them to work in that business incubator and find ways to make sure that Michigan City residents have the tools they need to start businesses. So just kind of draw out the idea of the business incubator. It's something that I've worked on a little bit in the library, uh, positions that I've had is just finding ways to support people trying to write a business plan. Um, support people trying to find investors or like coming up with a prototype and just, uh, being able to come up with tangible things that they can show people to, to get their business on its feet. Um, so that's one of my top priorities. And that's what I mean when I'm talking about smart growth is just finding ways to support Michigan City residents to do business with these incoming, um, growth that we'll be having in the next few years.
Terrific. Okay. Um, we are going to move on to, um, the second ward. And, um, I, I don't know if, is, if Paul Prisbalinsky has found his way back. I don't think he is, I don't think he's back. He's, was here, now we lost him. Okay. So we're going to go back to, uh, Daisy Lee, uh, the other candidate in, uh, second ward. And Daisy, um, so again, we'd love for you to tell us what your priorities are for the second ward. Um, and I guess I should do a better job of kind of describing, um, the second ward. Um, perhaps you could do that for us, kind of the, give us a little bit of a general idea of where the second ward is. And, um, and then I'd also like you to talk about, um, um, you know, we have kids that come here and then they go off to college and then they don't ever come back. And, um, and I'd like to know what your plan would be to try to make sure those kids come back. We need those kids to come back here, um, and, um, and grow our city. So, so those are the two questions for you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Deb. Uh, my top priorities for the second ward are safety, education and environmental sustainability. Um, the second ward is located kind of in the middle of the city. Uh, we've got a little bit of Franklin Street. We got a little bit of the west side. We got a little bit of the east side. Um, we're cuts off at Ohio, uh, all the way down to Pearl Street. Um, and then almost, we almost have bubbles and Carlsons involved. Um, so we deserve to live in a community where we feel safe, where our children feel safe and where we have a culture of collaboration and communication. As I mentioned earlier, the concerns of our youth have, that our youth have, have the same, they have the same concerns that the adults in our community have. In my crew and homeroom, uh, we are working on a community project to address gun violence, uh, which is an issue in our city. Uh, we're going to partner, uh, they would like to partner with the Sandy Hook Promise, um, to bring uh, the weirdness of gun violence and the awareness of different, um, different ways we can see, uh, I'm sorry, um, different issues that we can, um, see with our youth to address, uh, self-harm or the potential of harming others. Um, I want to take advantage of the many national grants available to increase youth programming in our city. Sports programs, programs that highlight hobbies, art, music, health, games and nature. And leadership programs that give our youth attitude, skills and knowledge they need to be active, positive leaders in their school and in our community. My students often tell me that they don't feel that there's enough for them to do in the city. And so if we're able to create a culture of positive youth development, this will also address some of the issues of safety in our city. With environmental sustainability, we need to address the issue of our waste and land pollution. We see litter around the city, which can actually harm our own drinking water in Lake, from Lake Michigan and the food we receive from Lake Michigan. Um, I want to help increase our recycling and reduce the amount of waste that we are sending to our landfill.
Great. So I'm sorry, but you are out of time. So we're only giving a minute and a half for these answers. So I apologize for the short time. But we do have a lot of candidates and not a whole lot of time. Okay, so, um, so then we are going to move right to the fourth ward and, and we have, uh, St. Katrina. Um, so Katrina Davis, um, so Katrina, same question. What are the priorities for the fourth ward? And you, and if you could, you know, give a little description, tell us a little bit about where the fourth ward is. Um, and then, um, also, um, I want you to talk about how you think we can recruit teachers of color to Michigan City. Um, we have a student population here, about sixty-five percent of students are students of color. Um, ninety-six percent of our teachers are white. Um, and, um, I think we all believe that it's important that students, um, see teachers who look like them. And so tell us, uh, again, what are your priorities for the fourth ward? And tell us what you think you can do to help recruit, uh, teachers of color to Michigan City.
Thank you, Deb. I've been addressed how we can recruit more teacher, uh, teachers of color. And being a substitute teacher, I know, uh, far too well, we don't see many, um, dark and brown, uh, educators. However, surrounding cities, um, in Michigan and Illinois, they provide an incentive like tax incentive on, on homes. If you, um, teach in a certain community, they allow you to have, um, housing, um, tax breaks and just give you incentives to want to live in a neighborhood where you teach. So that's something that could be brought to the table of conversation. How can we attract them? Can we give them an incentive? If they buy a house in the area where the school is, so that's, that's a, a conversation I would like to have that or could be had. Um, also, um, want to talk about the, uh, safety in communities. Um, I sat in the city council, uh, meeting and I heard about how they want to, uh, obtain more police officers and train them to keep them in our city and to make sure that we have the necessary equipment. I want to say, first and foremost, equipment should come first. We never want our, uh, firemen and our, uh, police officers to go out and, uh, hurt themselves. Um, not be able to, uh, help the citizens because the equipment is, is bad. Once that is taken care of, then let's look at obtaining and retaining our police officers. And I think that's a, uh, prior, a priority that I want to, uh, continue to address. I think that speaks the sentiment of most of the common councils that's there now and the ones that are running now. Everyone seems to see, seems to think that it's very important, uh, public safety. And I agree with that because we have, uh, people from nearby cities that are coming here. And if I can use this, they're just sitting up in, uh, taking Michigan City almost like a trap house. They're just coming here. They're dumping their business off and breaking laws. So we, we most definitely want to be prepared to, uh, respond to that. Um, housing, uh, affordable housing, attainable housing. I know too well when, uh, men and women are released from incarceration, depending on their charges, they're not allowed to rent, um, certain, um, apartment complexes or living in certain houses. I, I'm talking about felons, not talking about sex offenders because they're under a whole different law. So we want to, uh, talk with the housing commission. We want to sit with the city council and see what can be done. Because if they can't find housing, then they're homeless. Homeless leads to drugs. And then, uh, mental illness. That's another thing that I want to, um, bring to the table. We need to be.
Yeah. Thank you. So yes, you are out of time, Katrina. And, um, I know everyone has a lot to say, but we really were committed to keeping this to an hour. So, um, and I apologize for cutting you off. But, um, but we will, you know, you'll have another chance in your closing statement to add a little bit more of that information. So, uh, yes.
Uh, when, when the time is running down, can somebody wave?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Dahlia to put her, um, hand up, um, when people get close. That's really great. Thank you, um, Brian.
Because, you know, you, you're going and you don't know when that time is.
Right. Okay. So, okay. So, and so now, Brian, we're going to move to you, our first, um, at-large, um, uh, candidate. Um, and so, so again, we, you know, um, you, and maybe, you know, we'll give you a little bit more time because I doubled up on these questions. And, and in fact, I'm actually going to talk, I'm going to ask you to talk about a few specific things, um, as well as your priorities for the city. Um, and I know everyone has a lot to say and I'm, I apologize for being limited on time. But I want you to also talk about, and I know you're going to talk about your priorities for the city and I know you've got a lot to say, but I would like you to talk about um, the federal dollars that are out there, um, through the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act and the infrastructure, um, uh, bills um, that are really all, uh, you know, attainable by competitive grants. And, uh, I want to know how you think you can bring some of that money to the city, um, and what what would be your priorities for using that money? You know, what would you like to get that money for?
Okay. Uh, in regards to going on a search for grants, uh, you know, our city does not have a grant writer or a grant administrator. Uh, I think that would be, you know, we need somebody who, that's what they do full-time. Um, so, you know, the, the, that's how you bring grants. You have to have somebody that's out there actively searching for that. Um, so I'm going to quickly jump from that, but I'll talk about what we just had coming to our city, the ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, we had sixteen-point-three-million dollars come in and we started using that money for different things like, uh, the street department. Um, we had equipment for our police and, and other things of that sort. And, uh, that was a really good thing. There was a committee of us formed, uh, to come together in order to, uh, divvy up those funds and, and get those into a bunch of different places. Um, and we actually had to go take that, those information in, in front of the council to get approval to move on with the grant funds. Uh, I would love to see us, you know, we've done a lot for the city. We've done, we've paid our, 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 our workers. Uh, the pay, the, the bonus pay that, that were, that were still working during COVID. Uh, so we gave them money and things of that sort. I have ideas, like, like one in particular. Uh, we had a weatherization program here with the North Central Community Action Agency. Um, they have their own federal money where they weatherize different houses. Uh, but they have, there's a hand up already, but they have, uh, programs where they can't use their federal money to do improvements on homes uh, in order to be weatherized. And I think we have a chance to use some of that money to improve these homes so they can be weatherized. That would keep people in their homes who are the most needy of us in our community. I have, I have ideas like that. I think we should do something regarding helping people afford vouchers, uh, to be able to, to work while they, you know, they have daycare vouchers that are paid for. We have people who could be twenty dollars over the, the limit for a voucher. And they, they make the decision not to work because it's, it's, it's a better deal for them on not to work and then stay on, uh, public assistance and things of that sort. I believe even our riverboat money, our grant money and things like that should be used, uh, to assist and help out our people. Um, if you notice, or you know how I think, I'm always thinking that a rising tide lifts all, lifts all boats. And we got to start with our most needy in the community. We can't have this, this gap of people who are at the top and then we leave others behind as we move forward as a city. I am big on that and that's been my concentration, uh, with some of the things that I've done here, uh, as a city councilman.
All right. Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, so we're going to move on to, um, Vidya Cora. And, um, so same questions. Um, I'd like you to talk about, you know, what you would like, uh, to spend the federal dollars, uh, on from the infrastructure bills and the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, how, and how you will get that here. And then, of course, somehow squeeze into this small amount of time, your priorities for the whole city.
You know, Deb, I, I talked a little bit about priorities earlier about balanced economic growth, uh, about creating an environment to attract young people, focus on education, so, and safety and security. As everybody has said, it's very important. That's, without that, nothing else matters. So it is very important. Um, now, you talked about grants and, uh, as a county commissioner, we brought in millions of dollars, uh, to the county, uh, for grants. And I agree with Brian, either we can hire a grant writer or all we can contract with a grant writer. And that's what we did as a county commissioner. We contracted with somebody. And then, uh, I think there's a lot of money out on, for various things that we should take full advantage of those opportunities, even for like, you know, we talked about homelessness, you know. Mental health and substance abuse are one of the main reasons for homelessness. So there's a lot of grant money out there to address those problems. I mean, we have to take, give them shelter, you know, temporary shelter, permanent housing. But, uh, but if we don't address the root causes, then that problem, uh, continues, uh, to come back over and over again. Um, so I think, um, the econo- economic growth is important, sa- safety and security is important. Uh, how we ma- manage that money is critically important. So if there, there is money from riverboat, let's keep it for things that we cannot get grant money for, you know. But wherever we can get grant money, let's use that grant money to whether it's weatherization, whether it is, um, uh, whether it is homelessness, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, uh, and we can, uh, we can use all, all those resources. Um, and, and make sure, uh, that we use the money, the resources we have in an efficient way.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Okay. And then we'll move to Don Pristolinski. And, okay, Don, so same question. Um, you know, how can you bring, um, some of those federal dollars to Michigan City? There's just billions of dollars out there. Um, you know, all reliant on competitive bids, uh, competitive grants. Um, and then, and then, of course, um, again, if you can squeeze in also your priorities. Um, and then and then, of course, um, again, if you can squeeze in also your priorities for the city.
Uh, so as far as the uh federal funding goes, uh I know that. The city had the opportunity to bring in federal uh federal monies uh to Congressman Mervan. Uh, and that the uh offer was made to the city administration. But they never passed that information down to city department heads. And so that those grants were lost. I've heard of that that happening in the last two years. Uh, I will try to do everything in my power as a city councilman. And I think every council person would do the same if we can work as a collaborative group. And try to move forward and when information like that comes from the federal government. Because nobody, the the US congressman does not call it Don Prisbalinski. The US senator doesn't call it Don Prisbalinski. They call the city administration. You're supposed to pass that information on to us and then we move forward with what we'd like to see this money spent on. So yeah, if the city ever gets that kind of opportunity of federal funding and what we can use it on, I'd be more than happy to uh. To use that opportunity. And it's just like the ARP money that Councilman Dabney was referring to. You know, that came from the federal government. And thank God for the federal government have given us sixteen point three million dollars to spend this money on. On city equipment because that's going to help us going forward a long time into the future. You know, buying fire trucks, buying snowplows, buying police cars, all these kind of things. So yeah, uh my priorities now, real quick. Number one. And I mentioned it early, gun violence. And we have to get that under control. I had a meeting. Uh, with the police chief on Friday, dealing with the two, there were two shots uh fired incidences on the west side. And you know, and we're trying to get it under control. They're aware of it. Uh, the city council approved the. Uh, shots fired system and the license plate reading system, the fog system. And that's being in installed right now in the city. So the city council is moving forward with that. But to me, you know. We're we're talking about it now, but if something drastically happens, then we'll really be talking about it. And I'm trying to be proactive and alleviate that problem moving forward. And there was a a thousand other things I'd like to talk about, but I know my minute and a half is up.
Yes, I again, I apologize for the the short amount of time that we have. Um, okay, so now we're going to go all the way back um to the first ward and we um. We have time for everyone to do uh just a final closing statement. So we'll go back to a Greg Coulter in the first ward. And um and ask Greg for just a closing statement.
Yeah, so some things I'd like to say in closing, um I never really got the chance to or took the opportunity to talk about my educational background. Um, so of course I graduated from Westville. Um, I did a B A in history at um Ball State in Muncie. And then my first master's degree was in history um from Concordia in Montreal, um lived there for three years. And then I was in. Um, a master's program in library science, um which was basically a public administration degree, except with a little bit about um youth reading habits. So that's a bit more about me. People can find more information about me, like I said earlier, at cultureforcitycouncil.com. And then my email is contact@cultureforcitycouncil.com and my phone number is two one nine two two four six two six zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and we're going to move right to Daisy Lee from the second ward. Daisy, if you could just give us some closing information and as uh Greg did, uh please, you know, provide information so that people can reach you.
Absolutely, thanks. Uh, I believe in creating positive change in Michigan City. I want to ensure everyone's voice is heard and I want to be able to help lift up the voices that aren't always heard. I want to focus on safety for our city, increase youth programming, ensure that our students and adults have access to quality education. And increase environmental awareness. I would love to hear from current second ward residents and anyone else who would like to have their voice heard. You can reach me via email at daisyleeforindiana@gmail.com or on my Facebook page, Daisy Lee for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. Okay, and we're moving on then to fourth ward. So Katrina. Katrina, if you could again, provide information for people so they can get in touch with you and, you know, whatever final other remarks you'd like to make.
Thank you. Thank you, progressive, once again for having us out. Um, I'm looking forward to uh working with the city council if elected. Looking forward to help um moving Michigan City forward and making this uh city a great place to live and work in. I can be reached at two one nine two two nine three six zero five. My email address is katrinaformichigancitycouncilorfour@gmail.com. Uh, please feel free to go to my Facebook as well and uh check me out. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, and then um we'll move along then to Bryant for um your final words. I know you got a lot of words, Brian, and I apologize again, but. Oh, now you're muted.
There we go. Hey, don't start the clock on me yet, Dahlia.
Okay.
Wait till I start talking. Okay, first of all, in talking about the the seat, the grant writer and admit or grant administrator. We did have a chance to put one of those into the budget. Last time we made our city budget, but that was voted out of the budget. So we did have a chance to do that. Uh, again, I felt like I've been one of the most effective councilmen regarding lawmaking and handling of the tough decisions of move Michigan City forward. My depth and knowledge of the city budget is one of my great strengths. And I uh truly am a councilman who's always tried to make sure uh most of our valuable assets, our most valuable assets, our city workers. Are given the most competitive and fair salaries. And this is based on the professional salary study that we paid for. I led the fight trying to make sure we took care of all of our city workers at that time. Didn't quite work out the way I wanted it. Um, if you need uh further proof that I am the man for the position, just ask our mayors, past mayors and our and our department heads. Uh, I'm the only city councilman that's been asked by the different mayors to be on the promise scholarship committee, the double tracking committee. The train station uh development selection committee, the American Rescue Plan uh committee. And when Chief uh Dion Campbell was getting started with the flock Raven system that we're talking about in terms of safety. He came to me first uh to to help him with that that program. And then we introduced it. Uh, to the city after he and I had meetings beforehand. I could reason through the tough decision to make the best decisions for our city moving forward. And that is why I truly believe I am the man uh for the job to continue Michigan City moving forward in the future. Um, of course, people know that they can reach me at the B Dabney at e Michigan City. Uh, I prefer the personal email because sometimes the where I work won't allow the the that email to book rules of Bryant Dabney at Comcast dot net. And I also have a phone number I wish more people would use because I really like to talk to people, but two one nine two four two. Uh, zero four five eight. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, and next we'll go to Dr. Vita Cora.
Thanks again uh for having us uh this evening. Uh, you know, in Michigan City, like in any community, we have problems. We have opportunities and there are resources out there to take care of uh those problems uh by solving those problems. And realizing our full potential, but for that make, to make that happen, we need good leadership. That's that's the key, good leadership. And so we need leaders who are accountable, who are transparent, who are committed uh to serving the needs of the community. Uh, my work in the past uh speaks for itself. Uh, I am well qualified uh to serve on the city council. I have experience, I have a commitment to consensus building and I have a vision uh for the future of our city. Uh, so I'm um asking for your support and your vote uh in the upcoming election. Thank you very much.
Great. Would you like to provide some contact information?
Contact information is you can reach me at vcoretthree@hotmail.com, vidya cora dot com is my. Website and you can reach me through Facebook. Uh, and uh so I'm easily available.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, and Don.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the uh to the group for having us tonight. And yeah, uh I'm running for reelection. Uh, my experience and my strength on the city council and the leadership positions that I've held. For the past twelve years, give you an idea of uh the experience I have and how I lead. Uh, the collaboration and the collective agreements with the uh city council I've always had. And I work for everybody in Michigan City. I've worked on projects, east side, west side, south side. First ward, second ward, third ward, whatever. And I always get back to my constituents within twenty-four hours. After they call me. And just to let you know, the number one, the number one responsibility of the city council. Is the fiscal of the the fiscal responsibility for the city and to make sure the city runs on a balanced budget. Last year our bill, our budget was sixty-three million dollars. So when you go to the polls and you want to elect somebody, elect somebody with the experience. To deal with the sixty-three million dollar budget, where to make the cuts and where to use the money at in a proficient manner. And I'd just like to say one more thing that I'm very uh proud of. And it may sound minimal to some folks. But the promise scholarship program, that that program. Uh, two thirds of the council voted to expand that program to both students that go to Market High School now. And to renters that live in Michigan City. And we did that last year on a six to three vote from the city council. And I'm very proud of that. That there expands it to a whole nother group and there is plenty of money in that program to do that. If anyone wants to get ahold of me, they can get ahold of me at my website at prizzyformichigancity.com. And once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Yeah, and good luck to all the candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, so um, that was um, I felt like a speed dating experience. Um, but and I can see that everyone has so much to offer and so much more information that they want to provide. Uh, if only we had more time, but we really wanted to make this in an hour. And um and so. Thank you to all the candidates who who um participated in this um in this workshop and this uh forum. And um please, I uh urge everyone to uh get out and contact these candidates and ask all the questions. Because I know that um they mentioned a lot of things that people probably don't, you know, know a lot about yet. So um so I really encourage everyone to get out there. I also want to remind everybody that tomorrow, is that right? Tomorrow is the last day to register to vote um uh so that you can vote in the May third election. Um, so um please, you know, make sure that you are registered. Um, if you need more information about getting an absentee ballot or where to vote. Um, you can go to indiannavoters.com, you can check your registration there, you can register, you can request an absentee ballot if you need it. You can find your polling place um all at that um one website. So please go there if you have any um questions about uh your ability to get in and vote. Um, and then uh that's it for me. Uh, so I guess we're all set and um thank you again for joining us. And um, we'll, yes, you are quite welcome and we will see all of you um around town.
Thank you very much.